Second study session of Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Linda Schele?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and fair service.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, so this meeting will set the agenda for the 2019 regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting that will take place on June 16, 2025, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. No absences, we show all of council here. And I'm going to jump right into audience communication. Items that are not on the agenda make your way to the podium. Name, address, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Christopher Martin. And I've been instructed how to use this microphone, so there'll be no further feedback on that. One thing that I want to mention here is recently I had a couple inspectors who wanted me to repair a fence. And this, I just gave our city attorney a FOIA request, but the fence was damaged on a water main break that took place on Grantland Street, and this was between Arcola and Inxter Road. And so I submitted that along with an affidavit that that's exactly what happened, that the backhoe operator must have done that, okay? But when I tried to contact the water department, it's a number of years ago, I wasn't treated too favorably, let's just say that. So it was never resolved. So now I'm, Inspection Department wanted me to repair something that I didn't damage, okay? The next thing I want to talk about is Saturday they put up the flowers, the hanging baskets of flowers that you see around, and that goes back about 10 years ago. And there was a gal here from the court system, the director, and I think even Kathleen McCann was here. But anyway, here's the point I'm trying to make, is a great deal of time and effort is spent to water those flowers. Sometimes in the middle of the summer, they're watered twice a day. Now, I'm going to show you this here. These are ones that I have. They're plastic, okay? It looks pretty, doesn't it? They're plastic, and you know what I do with these? I leave them out all winter long. Once I hang them up, and I will tell you this, they last about eight years. And when I see those guys, there's a water, there's a truck with a water tank in it, there's a driver, there's a guy behind it with a hose, there's another guy behind that truck, so that he doesn't run into the truck in front. It's ridiculous. It's asinine. This is a waste of money, plain and simple, okay? There's a solution, okay? I brought it in just to kind of show you. But Laura Toye, at the time that that took place, you were just thrilled.
I was, and I still am.
Okay? Well, I'm just saying, it's a waste, it's a waste of taxpayers' dollars for that show. They're 10 feet up in the air.
It was a court.
They're 10 feet up in the air. When you drive by, those are the perfect way to do it. You take them down, storm away, whatever. But to have, have three guys out there.
That's time, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
I know you thought the flowers were for you.
Listen.
I'm taking them back home.
Mr. Martin, I-
I thought they were for us.
You never cease to amaze me at times. I thought those flowers were for me, but that's cool, I guess.
Chris Molding, 28456 Tulipwood. I wanted to clarify something through the President, if I could, to Councilmember Morgan had asked some questions about, like, what Infinity had been doing with our HOA, right? I'm here to represent the Emerson Oaks Homeowners Association. The reason I'm here, right, is because Infinity Homes had promised us that all of these repairs would be done by May 31st. They weren't. Most of the repairs have not been completed. As City Engineer Todd said, none of the concrete work has been done. There's been flags of sidewalk missing since early last fall, right? And this is before the Frost laws went into effect and before any of that stuff, right, like, DBB taken care of, right? They have their money. We're basically, we've taken a backseat, right? The neighborhood, all 35 of us, right, the builder, developer's been made whole. They have their finances, right? I can give you, if you'd like, at some point, all of the email communication between Infinity and the HOA. We had a conference call with Reno Sove from Infinity where he agreed that all of those, a punch list of, I'm not kidding, 50 items in the common areas needed to be taken care of, right? And he agreed, they agreed, to take care of all of those things by May 31st. It hasn't happened, right? That's why I'm here in front of you guys, because I just got an email today, again, prompting me to be here, basically saying, we're not going to help you anymore. Our dispute is with the city. The city holds our bond money. You, as an HOA, are irrelevant. We don't care about you, right? The city holds our money, they hold our bond money, they're the ones that have to give us back our bond money, and the city has to agree that this HOA is taken care of. Problem with that, right, as far as, in my estimation, as the HOA president, is that if the city, Todd, and who's the guy in charge of landscaping, Frank, if they say, yeah, it's fine, and return the bond money, right, all the repairs that need to be done are left to the HOA and the residents? When we're supposed to be turned over a turnkey operation ready to go, sprinkler systems working, right, lawn and landscape taken care of, trees living, all the concrete work taken care of, because now going forward, we have a complete operation that's, you know, 100%, and then, yeah, if there's repairs in the future, yes, as an HOA, it's our responsibility, right? But we shouldn't be taking repairs, and we shouldn't be taking on things right off the bat. Any of you who've been in the neighborhood, I know Councilmember Donavich has been in the neighborhood, right? We have a cul-de-sac, right, with a big circle. They landscaped that, right? They didn't pull any of the weeds, they didn't treat it, they just left all the weeds there, threw rocks and mulch on top of it. A week later, it's completely overgrown with weeds. You know what their email said to us? It's your fault, you should have put pre-emergent down. Now, we're trying to keep HOA dues as low as we possibly can for residents. So it's difficult, right? Like, I just wanted to clarify that. So I'm more than happy to give more communication or any of the email communication, I can let anybody see it.
Let's take it offline, we'll make sure we'll give you some information.
Yeah, appreciate you guys.
Yeah, no problem. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, question.
Just name, name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, listen.
I'm getting late.
I'm like a hawk right now.
Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. When I spoke earlier today, I read the portion of the letter that the mayor signed when the budget was completed back in last fall. And it says again, "City administration and city council have made a commitment to determining how these critical capital needs," because they were talking about items around the city that needed to be taken care of and repaired. And it says, again, "To determine how these critical capital needs will be addressed for future years, including moving forward the city center project as laid out in Vision 21. This includes construction of a new senior center, well, senior wellness center, beginning of the construction of a new city hall, major upgrades to the civic center library." It doesn't say that they're going to tear down the civic center library, it says, "major upgrades." So, and this also says, "future construction on a new police station and renovation to the fire stations and other city facilities." So my question is, where, at what point did the library come into play with the Vision 21 and to be totally demolished, and a new city library combo come to be?
What I'll do is I'll open it up for council after to answer your question. So we're going to go jump right into council communications right after this.
Okay, that's fine. I would be interested to find out when it was, because it doesn't, personally, I did not find any information about this until the February meeting when we were all sat here, and it was like, yeah. So, anyway, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, no, thank you. Any other audience communication?
Unfortunately, Mr. King is back.
Who's Mr. King?
Yeah, unfortunately. All right, you guys know who I am. All right, you know, I listened to this guy from the HOA.
The minutes, yeah.
All right. Okay, Steve King, Coventry Gardens, sorry. I listened to him, and I just wondered, why do people have to come back again, and again, and again, and again, and then we talk, talk, talk? I'll tell you what, Jack Kirksey would have picked up the phone, they'd be fixing all that. All right, I want to address Ellen from Mayfield. She's the one with the, all the adult residences, service centers by her. Okay, here's what I don't think anybody on this council gets. The state does have precedence over building codes and other things and zoning, but every city has within their purview the right to control every business, where it's cited, how it operates, and you can't put four of those facilities within a six-house street. You just don't do it. The state doesn't tell you, yeah, you've got to put them here, 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 and there's two more, they're planning two more. So the city has the right to control what happens within their borders. I don't know why you don't get that. All right. 60% of the millages and bonds failed in May. Never happened, unprecedented, 60%. So Plan B, if the millage goes down, you don't need the millage to do what you're going to do. $45, $47 million. You're going to take the old courthouse, I'm working on the renderings, we're going to put a second floor on it. There's only 50 to 80 people that work in the city hall right now. We don't need a $47 million to accommodate them. So we're going to throw $15 million into the new city hall. $5 million for Bennett, $5 million for the police station, $5 million for the firehouse, the remainder on what everybody in this community wants, a central gathering place. You put that in, the rest grows around it organically. Why do you leave the police station where it is? It's the most visible building in the city. Why do you leave the fire station? Same reason, call times. Why do you put city hall right there? The three most important municipal buildings, back to back to back, right on the main road. Why would you hide a police station behind a courthouse? Spend $2 million to move the communication tower after you spent $1 million on a fence? Why would you do that? It makes no sense. Every time they leave the building, they test their lights. You've got residences right there. This, this plan you have, it's like, it was written in stone, came down from the mountain from Moses. This is what we're doing. No! We're going to stop. The millage is going to be defeated, and then we're going to have some real conversations in the city.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Hello, Mr. President. Jim Bigga, Lancastershire Road. On this millage, you guys are asking us to trust this administration with $150 million for a plan which keeps changing, which, a plan that you just voted to have new drawings rendered, for a plan that two weeks ago, they had no drawings for anything, and now they're presenting drawings in the next few days and weeks of what they're proposing to do. How they got that money, I don't know where that money came from. You want us to trust them to do maintenance on existing buildings, which we've now heard that you tried to get money to get something done at Noble. Nobody wants to force the mayor and the administration to do that, because heaven forbid, whatever agreements have been made, that everybody's agreed that this is the best thing since sliced bread, we're not going to maintain any buildings, because we'd rather tear them down. I sat through a briefing last week where you guys showed me it's $20 million more to build a library than to renovate a library, and in 25 years, it's still $10 million down the drain, and I'm not saving any money by building a new library versus renovating. Yes, you heard me. You guys are spending $10 million more to build a new library that in 25 years is not paying anything back to the citizens. It's costing us $10 million out of our pockets in this bond to pay for a library that we don't really need. This is why we don't trust anybody in the administration. This is why we don't trust the government. This is why we keep questioning, what was the rush? This is the problem we have. And yes, you're all down there diligently looking at your iPads, your computers, your notebooks, you're writing notes. Maybe you'll go back and say something to the administration that, you know, this is probably a dumb idea, let's change it, but we're down there, we're too far along. So that's why everybody's up in arms, and the way, you know, social media is up in arms. And it's just going to get worse between now and August 5th. Absentee ballot ballots go out, it's going to get ugly out there, and it's all because of this rush to do something. And you guys are part of the problem. And all these people running for office, remember that. Don't be part of the problem, be part of the solution. That has been forgotten by everybody running for office, whether you're in Washington, Lansing, or here in Livonia. You're part of the problem and not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience communications?
Seeing none, I am going to, the council announcements, the only business I have is we do show new data on item 10. And then before I hand it over, I just wanted to say, Eileen, the first time I seen anything for tearing down a library was at that one Capitol Alley meeting, I think the same one you're speaking of. That's when I think Councilwoman Toye and I accidentally set the internet on fire, and that was the first time that we seen the library.
It was in February.
It was in February.
It was before that one.
I think so. Oh, yeah, maybe it was prior, but February is what's ringing a bell.
Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it. I did want to address one of the resident remarks in regards to the library dated September 18th, excuse me, dated September 2018, Livonia Vision 21 was drafted, later passed by the council unanimously in 2020, 2021, and since then, that's been the guiding document that the city council has been following. Page 19, Livonia Vision 21, on the Civic Center, city center campus. Livonia City Center is envisioned to be redeveloped as a mixed-use and civic center for the community. City Center is envisioned to become the functional downtown for Livonia residents. The special plan area, see page 28, presents a detailed analysis and vision for the redevelopment of the area, which includes building new facilities for the library, city hall, and public safety. The vision includes space for community gathering and events, as well as 55,000 square feet of retail, office space, and more than 800 residential units. That was passed unanimously by the city council and has been the operating basis for this council since it was passed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other, Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a couple things I just wanted to address as well that came up. We've been pressed a lot on how they can, how can we be trusted to maintain these buildings going forward? And no disagreement for me that some of the buildings have not been maintained properly. Actually, I want to give a shout out here to Councilwoman Buzinski, because she's been very passionate about this since we both took office together, and I fully support it. We've pushed really hard to get a capital facilities manager put in place, and that is part of the new finance department realignment. And then I actually pushed to make sure that that person was ADA certified as well. So that we have worked on this, and this is something we're both very passionate about, and I hate to say yes, please try to trust us, but we are working very hard to make sure that this happens, so that there is a long-term plan for taking care of these buildings, for making sure they're maintained and going forward. By the way, the new city hall is budgeted to be $37 million, not $47 million, and by the way, central gathering space is essential to the project as well. So when that keeps coming up, that that's something that people want, it is an essential part of it. And that's really, I just wanted to clarify a couple of those points. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
Mr. President?
Yes, yes.
I have a question through you to the attorney.
Feel free.
So on our original, on our agenda earlier, we passed the ordinance that would clarify the map, for the precinct maps?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm looking at the voter precinct map on the clerk's page, and it looks like what we passed is already up on the clerk's page.
Imagine that.
I can't speak to the clerk's page, I'm not, I'm not familiar with how they update or when they update. I'm just playing the clerk tonight.
Okay. Can you find out, or how do we find out that that's the correct map or not, so that the residents know that if the correct voter precinct map is-
I will circle back with the clerk's office tomorrow and get you some information on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns, questions? All right, we're going to move on to the agenda. Starting with item number one is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Aaron Kurt from Old Rosedale Gardens Homeowners Association in reference to host a 100th birthday party with live music and maze park on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Mr. President, I do want to give the petitioner an opportunity to speak since they've waited till patiently, but I would also like to just offer an approving on consent if there's no objection.
Aaron, I didn't see, I was looking here, I'm like, where's Aaron? Boom, you're right there.
That's okay, hi. What's her name?
So, I mean, Aaron, it is a monumental anniversary, so if you'd like to speak-
Tell us a story.
Sure, I'll be very brief. Old Rosedale Gardens is turning 100 years old this year, and we are planning to throw a big birthday party. We're having a parade, a cookout, entertainment, magician, live music. We're just asking you to waive the noise ordinance. We don't expect the event to go past 9:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Am I good?
Yes, you're good, thank you, guys. But then call a point of order, if that's the case. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Item number two is a block party and street barricade. Comes to us from Lauren Fidel to be held on Sunday, June 29th, 2025, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. along Five Mile Road, from 36996 to 369165 Mile Road. Lauren, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Good. Tell us a little bit about this.
So this is our annual block party for my husband's head football coach at Churchill High School, so, but went to Stevenson.
That's still, that's still-
We have a little both. And so my boys play for the Little League team, so we bring both teams together, the coaches and their families together, so they come to our house, we block off the whole block, and all families come out from the neighborhood. We only have about eight houses on our little strip there between, like, the CVS and Fitzgerald Street, so it's a chance for everybody to get together and celebrate, and we can see the fireworks from our boulevard, so everybody comes together and enjoys the celebration.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I don't want to steal it from Key.
Yes, that sounds like a great plan. We'll offer an approving on consent. It's okay with the other member.
We have an approving on consent. Any otherbody, anybody from council would like to speak more?
No, I just want to say something, if I could. I just, congratulations, what a nice thing to do, and you can see the fireworks whereabouts are, yeah, up at Five Mile.
So we're right across from Marywood.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, yeah, between Five and Levan.
That's great. This is a woman that was at the connection as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, and you're a principal at-
At Garfield Skill Center.
Or Garfield, yeah.
And Livonia Transition Program.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So you have an approving on consent, so your matter is all but assured to be approved, unless you want to hang out with us till midnight next week.
It's been great, thank you.
Thank you.
[laughter]
Any comments from the audience on the block party? Seeing none.
It was good.
We'll move on to item three. Is a block party request comes to us from Connor Burkle to be held Friday, July 4th, 2025, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Roy Craft between Woodreen and Loveland Streets. It's Colin here.
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving on consent. I know there's been discussion about this before, I know a few residents, I think the next item as well, Carrie, Carrie, Councilon Business was talking to that resident, they had some issues with kids and whatnot, so I think a few residents had to leave. So I'll offer an approval for consent, please.
Yes. Any other questions and concerns from council? Anything from the audience? All right. Colin's got an approving on consent. We're going to move on to item four, is another block party request comes to us from Nicholas Scott to be held on Saturday, July 15th, 2025, from, what's that? Oh, July 5th, what did I say? 15th, I got to hit, listen, it's empty, guys, I'm sorry. 5th, 2025, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Ohio Street between California and Colorado Street.
I will take them, this is my neighborhood, as noted, Nick was here with his two kiddos for a very long, regular, so I said I would speak on the behalf, it's a very lovely party that brings the neighborhood together once a year, it's happened a few years now, thanks to Nick and his wife for organizing it, so I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would never try and take over somebody's block party since my neighborhood doesn't do them. I was just trying to help others.
Thank you for doing that, Carrie.
That's awesome. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none. We're going to move on to item five is a request for waiver use extension to new user. It looks like it's Ryan Cato, or Cato, the principal of Keystone Commercial Real Estate, the representative of Parlor Donuts in reference to petition 2022-07-02-15 submitted by, what is that, how do I pronounce that? Philomeny? Philomeny? Your business, never mind, it's in here, family. Oh, there's a P. Listen, it says Family Pharmacy. Guys, I'm sorry, it's getting late. Requesting to add a drive-up window to the east side of a retail shopping center at 29195 through 29215 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Garden and Middle Belt. Mr. Tormean, is this you?
I can briefly introduce this. Mr. Cato approached us a couple months ago, I believe, he has an interest in the property adjacent to his commercial shopping center, which is on Plymouth Road. You may be familiar with John's Cleaners. This building exists, or property is just to the east of the shopping center that Mr. Cato owns and operates, and in 2022, council approved a tenant within that complex called Family Pharmacy. They operated with a drive-up window, and as a condition of the approval, you limited that drive-up window to only, to just that user. So as Mr. Cato approached us about this, a couple of things happening, they're going to change the tenant, new tenant coming in, represented by Mr. Levine here, as Parlor Donuts, they would occupy the same space where Family Pharmacy is located, and in addition, they would purchase John's Cleaner, remove that building, and construct a parking lot in its place. So planning is fully supportive of the amendments, offers some needed parking for the facility and cleans up an obvious blighted condition.
Sounds great. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Buzinski.
I am so excited about this, guys. This is the highlight of my day, I'm not exaggerating at all. I, as noted earlier, recently held an Economic Development Committee meeting where this was a very big topic of conversation, John's Cleaners, that is. So when I saw that this was not only removing that building, but bringing a Parlor Donuts to Livonia, let me just say, I'm offering an approving. I do it on consent, I will defer to my colleagues. Thank you for coming to Livonia, I am super excited. For those of you who don't know, Google Parlor Donuts, I get very excited, they have gourmet donuts, including gluten-free and keto, they have a Maya mocha and, like, coffees, and you know, I'm always one, I could use one now, actually, for a good coffee, a destination of breakfast sandwiches, so, so not to give a commercial, but just to say that-
That was a commercial.
Extremely-
Do you need to recuse yourself? I mean-
No, I'm just very, I mean, we all know how much people are asking for, not car washes, not storage facilities, and nothing related to chicken on Plymouth Road, I am just so excited. So-
I am too, guys, thanks for-
It's catchy.
So again, I will leave it at that, to just say, again, thank you, welcome, I'll defer to my colleagues.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Councilmember Buzinski is just slightly excited about your coming. I thought it was going to be about the blight, not the donuts, but I guess it's both. Anyway, this has been a long time coming, obviously, September of 2022, but the one question I quickly had, I was looking at the site plan that you, or the renderings that you put in, with parking, 20% has to be ADA compliant, and I'm not sure, maybe it just wasn't shown on, okay, I just always like to check, make sure that box is checked, and that we have our van accessible parking and all that. But other than that, I'm super excited about a drive-through, though, we don't even, we can just roll up in our jammies and get them, so.
Let me go to Councilman Donavich, and then I'll jump back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, gentlemen, thank you for being here. So you can see some excitement amongst the council, this has been an ice war, not only for Livonia, but more specifically, southeast Livonia.
There's a few issues we have up and down Plymouth Road, it's not unique to just Livonia, every community deals with these issues, but this, earlier we approved the demolition, and now building a new building at Seven Mile, and now we're talking about demoing John's Cleaner, which has been an eyesore and a difficult building to repurpose. And when I heard about this a few weeks ago through a Planning Department, their efforts in Jerome Hannon Building Inspection, it was a really big win, myself and the council president, back in 2020, we were holding meetings on blighted and demoed properties along Plymouth Road, and more recently, Councilman Buzinski held a really great Economic Development Committee meeting on that similar topic, so it's been a big issue for our community. So on behalf of all the city council members, I don't normally talk on their behalf, it is a huge thing, and we sincerely appreciate it, and this is probably the easiest site plan you all ever deal with, because typically speaking, there's a lot of difficult questions, as there should be, and this is a huge win for our community, you've done a good job, Keystone is a big player in the real estate industry, and they do professional work, so thank you for solving this issue. My only question is, is when can you start demoing the building?
Our goal is to do it this year. We're going through our due diligence now, waiting for city approval and everything else, to make sure that all our ducks are lined up. So our plan is to have that parking lot completed before the winter.
That'd be huge if you could do that, I'm sure Jerome Hannon Inspection will work with you guys diligently to get that done. I know Mr. Hannon watches these meetings, and he's going to get the message loud and clear, the administration wants this done as fast as possible, and this is great to clean up southeast Livonia, so thank you guys, and wish you a lot of luck. Only issue I had is you did not bring any donuts this evening, so, thank you, Mr. President.
I mentioned that to him, but I don't know.
I was here at 8:00 a.m., I thought the meeting was at 8:00.
I don't blame you, they're long gone, it's fine, I get it, no.
Mr. President, sorry, just I, obviously, in my excitement, I did forget a couple things. When do you think that the Parlor Donuts would open?
We're hoping December.
December, okay. And then are you guys going to have bike racks? Because I plant a bike up there, I know it's a drive-through, which is very convenient, I'll probably use as well. Not just me, but obviously, we want to promote bike and walkability here in Livonia, so if there is an opportunity, if there is, yes, I can earn that donut, burn off those calories. If there is an opportunity to add bike racks, I think that that would be a great addition to the site.
All those little things will work out with the Planning Department, and that's why we're here, because we wanted to simultaneously have them work out on their build-out and us working out on the parking lot, so that both can be completed by the end of the year.
Thank you.
I love it. So we have an approving on consent.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I made these petitions, the pharmacy that was in there, wonderful people, I started going there several months ago, and they got taken off the Blue Cross list because Blue Cross is moving to these bigger pharmacies now, rather than the little guys. Do you know if they're going to relocate anywhere?
I believe that the tenant is working at another pharmacy, but not for himself.
But not for himself?
Yes.
Okay, so they're going to complete, you're going to obviously completely shut that down, okay?
It's shut down now.
Okay, I just wanted to tell you, they were really good people to their customers, and hopefully, I'm sure you'll be really good, especially to Carrie when she comes to run a bike. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Carrie's already been signed to do the first commercial.
Yes.
There's a councilwoman, yeah, well, guys, honestly, you have an approving on consent, appreciate you, I'm echoing the sentiments, honestly, thanks for helping Plymouth Road, it's a great area, and we wish you luck. You can come back on June 16th, but your matter is all but assured to be approved.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Any comments from the audience on our friends at Family Pharmacy that I got into, I'm getting a good use, you want us to...
Yeah, if I could, Chris Muldoon, 28456 Tulip, would just thank you for that, because as, again, a resident of south Livonia, and somebody who represents both the Columbus Circle Civic Association and the Emerson Oaks State Homeowners Association, we've, me and Carrie have had a lot of conversations about, sorry, Councilwoman Buzinski, had a lot of conversations about blight on Plymouth Road, I'm maybe one of the most outspoken people you're going to find about Plymouth Road, generally, and it just, it's really, it's nice to see something like that going in, and as a resident, they probably already left, but we, like honestly, we really appreciate that kind of stuff, because the walkability, the bikeability, that's what people in the Columbus Circle Civic Association want, I mean, like, there's so many families and people like living, it's such a vibrant area, a vibrant neighborhood, with the Columbus Circle Park, and just families generally, like, walkability, bikeability, like, a donut shop like that is the perfect thing, like, to have, like, in that area, it's great, and you have the coffee shop next door, it's perfect for the area, so I just, I'm really happy about that, I'm very excited about that, so, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
For the record, there was a donut shop where we now have a car wash, by the Burger King, remember?
Yes.
So, I mean, we've had, we've had...
No, so what it was is, it was Sunrise Donuts, I believe, and it is now a dealership, it's next to the new car wash.
Hardly dealership, near that car wash. But I just, I want to defend Plymouth Road a little bit, I've been on that road for 40-some years, there's a lot of good things going on, and we've dedicated some PRDA money over there, we fixed it up for many years, believe it or not, and there's a lot of good people on Plymouth Road, and any of you that want to go into business and pay employees every week, and pay the insurance, and pay all the stuff you do as a small business owner, which I know my colleague right here can relate to, please, I beg you to go into business and do that. So I want to be cautious, we are the backbone of communities, small businesses, and we've got to start sticking up for them, because they're the ones that sponsor your Little Leagues, and all the kind of donations when they come through for these civic associations. So I take a little bit of offense when people climb down Plymouth Road, yeah, there's some blight there, but for the most part, people keep it up, and I just, I got to say that for my fellow retailers and people down there, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, no, you're good, we're going to move on to item six, is a request to authorize an expenditure, comes to us from our Livonia Fire and Rescue, for an annual association dues from Western Wayne County Fire Department Mutual Aid Association, for an amount not to exceed $27,384 annually, for a period of five years from budgeted funds. Chief, great to see you, how are you?
Mr. President, I don't know how I can top donut shops, but I'll try.
Try.
So Livonia Fire, we've been a member of the Mutual Aid Association since its inception, obviously, the day-to-day providing and receiving mutual aid from our partners throughout Western Wayne County is very important, but one of the main benefits is our three special teams, our hazmat team, our technical rescue team, and our drone team, all of which have been in the news recently, with the hazmat team cleaning up a spill at Middle Belt and Eight Mile, we had our tech rescue team down in Wyandotte in a deep trench rescue, where they successfully rescued a victim of a collapse, and four of my members received meritorious service awards. We also had our drone team up in northern Michigan, checking out the damage to all the radio towers from the ice storm. So, very important teams, and they can travel throughout the state. Unfortunately, due to inflation, costs are going up for equipment, trucks, training, so that's causing an increase in our yearly dues, so that we can maintain our readiness to respond to emergencies, and that amount now requires me to come and request council approval. So, the fire department's requesting an approving resolution for the annual dues for Western Wayne Mutual Aid for the next five years. I don't anticipate an increase in that five-year period, this should help us out along with some money we got from the county, and it goes by our census, so come 2030, there may be an adjustment, and if there's an adjustment between now and then, I would obviously come back and let council know.
Thanks, Chief. Council? Councilman Morgan, yeah, floor's yours.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
An approving on consent, anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, Chief?
Thank you very much.
Is that your only one?
Have a great night, that's all I got.
Great night, Chief.
You too, thank you.
Moving on to item number seven is a request for authorization of a one-year agreement extension for prisoner housing with the Calhoun County Sheriff's Office, comes to us from the Division of Police, in reference to the existing transportation commitment and care for Livonia prisoners, including basic medical, dental, and access to social workers from budgeted funds. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Thank you for having me. Captain Tyree, representing the chief police for the police department. So we're asking for an amendment to the existing contract and extend the contract term for one additional year, for the, as you said, the existing transportation commitment and care for the Livonia prisoners, including basic medical, dental, and access to social workers from our budgeted funds. We've been with Calhoun County since 2014, this is in regards to overcrowding issues with the Wayne County jails. Our relationship with the county has been, again, with 11 years, it's been mutually positive, and we're looking to extend that here for another year. We've been, our current contract was executed in 2021, and we had two additional years to, two additional years to exercise, and that's what we're asking for at this time. Our contract will increase by 5% to $60.36 per prisoner, and most recently, just talking to the chief and the other captains, is that there's been, Calhoun has recently negotiated contracts with other local police departments, and those increases have been 18%, and they're keeping ours down to 5% for this one-year contract. And we're just looking to have this one-year extension, and then we'll possibly go out for bid later on next year.
Sounds great. Councilman Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President, thanks, Captain, for being here this evening, I understand this project, or this contract, rather, is a little unique, there's not a ton of bidders out there, so I want to commend you and the department for being able to secure only a 5% increase when some of our counterpart's and other municipalities have been not much higher than that, so I think that's great work by you and the department. We have to store prisoners, and when Wayne County gets overcrowded, they have to go somewhere in a respectful way, and I think that's what the department does, so, Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Any comments, concerns from council? Anything from the audience? All right, you got an approving on consent.
Thank you, sir.
You don't really have to come the next time, unless you want to, or make the chief come.
Thank you so much.
Great to see you.
Bye.
All right, item number eight is a request to release capital improvement bond, comes to us from the Housing Commission, in reference for acquiring, constructing, and furnishing and equipping approximately 100 housing units for low to and moderate income senior citizens, including necessary right-of-way site improvements and ancillary facilities. Good evening, Mr. Reynolds, how are you?
Jim Ingles, Livonia Housing Commission. Back on January 15th, the city council authorized Council Resolution 925, which authorized a notice of intent to be issued, for us to issue $10 million of general obligation bonds. That was published in the Detroit Legal News for a period of 45 days, there was no negative comments received whatsoever, so the next step would be for the city council to approve the attached bond resolution, which is entitled 2025 Capital Improvement Bonds, Limited Tax, General Obligation, authorizing the issuance of the bonds to move forward with this project. As the council knows, we still have a lot of steps to go through, in terms of selecting an architectural and engineering firm to be brought back to council, along with site plan approval, but this is the next step in the financing to set that up, to possibly issue the bonds probably late this summer or early fall. So it asks the city council to approve this bond resolution.
Thank you, council.
Yes, Mr. President, I, you know, I think that this is an exciting project for our city, it's great to have this movement forward, and I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's no objection.
Could we have that on regular?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would just like to have it on regular, thank you.
We have it on regular? Any other comments from council? Anything from the audience? All right, we'll see you back here on the 16th.
Very good.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience on that item? All right. Moving on to item number nine is a reappointment of Tim Kliz to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from me, for a three-year term, which will expire on July 12th, 2028.
Mr. President, I will offer an approving for Mr. Kliz, you've been a very dedicated member of the community for a long time, I know council president would love to offer the motion, but he is chair in the meeting right now, so I get that honor, and he's said a lot of great things about you and your service, you've served on the ZBA for six years, you're an attorney, you have a ton of experience, and a lot of cases you've dealt with on the ZBA, the ZBA has a very important job with legal decisions that impact our residents and businesses, and it's really important to have someone like you, and I know, I'm just sharing what councilman, council president has said about you, and I'd like to offer that approving for the regular, or for consent, if that you okay with my colleagues, thank you, sir.
Listen, there's one thing you're missing, too, I mean, we gave a very professional, and not to say that what I'm about to say is not professional, but we also have a pop culture-like guru right here, he's got, I think, more Kiss collection than anybody, but no, Tim's been great, I'm just giving him some kudos, great member of the community, got to meet you a long time ago, appreciate your service.
Thank you, appreciate it, and I've sat with quite a few of you on the ZBA, and actually, it's nine years, I'm heading into my 10th year, started in 2016.
You're going to get another certificate.
I actually didn't get one at all, sore spot, but that's okay, I'll get one next year, it'll be 10 years, I'll get one then.
Nice shirt.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
All right. Any concerns or questions from the audience on that one? Seeing none. We're going to move on to item number 10, is an appointment of Lindsay Hakela to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Carrie Buzinski, council member, for a three-year term, which will expire on July 12th, 2028. Council, I'll hand it over, you want me to hand it over to Carrie?
Can I do an introduction?
Oh, yeah, so the floor's yours.
Yeah, Lindsay wants to come on down. Lindsay Hakela is a civil engineer and architect who works for OHM, and her caseload is focused on the city of Romulus, so doing development projects for that, for that city, she also serves on the historical commission, Livonia's Historical Commission, and has since 2019. She is a dedicated professional, passionate about urban planning, city development, incredibly knowledgeable, I know that she will continue to serve the city well, yesterday she was at the flea market in our first meeting, a lot of people talked about that, and she is a dedicated volunteer and commission member, who knows about the kinds of issues that go before the ZBA. She's experienced and can jump right in, not, there is no dedicated qualifications to be a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, it is an appointment that is made by city council members, so when there is a reappointment or a vacancy, council members rotate based on seniority of who gets to make that appointment, based on the current reappointment period, it is my selection, Martha had the first selection earlier this year, and I take my work on city council very seriously, and I wanted to make sure that I selected somebody that I knew I could trust to serve the city well, and who had the experience to do the work professionally, have the knowledge to do so. Lindsay, as I mentioned, works for OHM, her direct supervisor is Jessica Katers, who is often coming before council, she also serves on the library, or Livonia Commission, she's on the Livonia Historical Preservation Commission, and wanted to be here tonight, was unable to make it, so submitted a letter instead that I will read, and it says, "I have had the pleasure of working closely with Lindsay Hakela over the past four years as OHM advisors. Lindsay is a dedicated licensed professional whose background in community development, infrastructure design, and maintenance, and community engagement make her exceptionally well-suited for a position of the Livonia Zoning Board of Appeals. Lindsay holds a Bachelor of Science in both civil engineering and architecture from Lawrence Tech University, a dual-degree program, her academic foundation is complemented by her career designing infrastructure and reviewing site development. Lindsay has consistently demonstrated an understanding of municipal operations and zoning regulations. In her current role, she advises her client communities on acceptability of waiver and variance requests, as well as presents solutions that protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Lindsay brings a thoughtful analytical approach to problem-solving and a sincere interest to ensuring that zoning decisions are fair, transparent, and aligned with the community's long-term goals. Her combination of education, experience, and community involvement makes her a strong candidate for this board." So I think Jessica, a partner with OHM, says it very well, and I'll also point out that we currently don't have a civil engineer on the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I think that specifically Lindsay will bring an important perspective, education, and experience to our ZBA.
Thank you. Council? Need a motion?
Oh, a motion?
Well, can I make a motion?
Oh, did you make one?
I, I...
Yeah, she made it.
She can make, okay, perfect.
Motion to approve on consent.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to approve on consent? Do you want to say anything? And then I'll go to the audience, I'm just giving her the opportunity. You jumped up quick, though, that was like a record.
Well, they told me, get up fast.
I would like to say, as part of my duties for OHM, I do get to frequently visit their planning, for the city of Romulus, I do go to visit their planning commission meetings and their city council meetings. I am very familiar with rules, Robert's Rules of Order. I do this on a daily basis. This is like my bread and butter is municipal engineering and digging into ordinances. And as Jessica mentioned, I do write, I do write a lot of, there's this ordinance, this is why this person is requesting a variance or a waiver, and this is why we support or don't support this and what we would support instead.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to go to the audience. Name, address. You've got two minutes on this one.
Okay. Denise Micah, Lancashire Road. The company that she works for is, do they have contracts with Livonia now? Okay. So if anything comes up, I hope she recuses herself from that for conflict of interest.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. No, thank you. And we have checks and balances out there too with the Ethics Commission and stuff, but that's just-
And I would like to say, my entire job has nothing to do with the city of Livonia. I'm only with the city of Romulus, so it doesn't depend on it.
Yes, yes, yes. Councilwoman Buzinski.
And to address that, OHM is a Livonia-based company with a lot of residents who live and work here in the city. So they are, employees from OHM are represented on the Traffic Commission, Livonia Historical Commission, Livonia Historic Preservation Commission, the planning-
Plymouth Road?
Plymouth Road Development Authority Planning Commission that I know of offhand. So it is not unusual for representatives from OHM to sit on boards of commissions here in Livonia. They are just an active and engaged company that hires and attracts top talent that want to be engaged in our community. And again, Lindsay is a model of that.
I'm just concerned about conflict.
No, sorry. You can't, you'd have to address from your, I know. Well, you're good. You're good. With that, I'm going to go to the audience. If anybody would like to come up, you'd have two minutes. Name and address. You've got two minutes.
Sure. Tim Klitz, Manor Lane. Actually, reading a letter that has been penned by Greg Coppola, who is the chairman of the Zoning Board, who couldn't be here this evening. Esteemed council members, my apologies for not being able to present my thoughts and opinions live to this council. However, unfortunately, I'm traveling out of town for business. I'm writing to you both, as both a Zoning Board of Appeals chairman and a concerned citizen in support of Chris Bolivan's reappointment as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I've had the pleasure and honor of serving with Chris in the Zoning Board of Appeals for the last six of my over 10 years as a board member. Chris quickly acclimated to the rigors of the ZBA and has been as an engaged thoughtful participant during all meetings. Chris's broad professional experience delivers an analytical and unique perspective to each case. Further, Chris's meeting attendance has been exceptional, which is a reflection of his dedication to his appointment as well as how serious Chris regards his responsibilities to the community as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The indiscriminate tossing aside of Chris Bolivan's experience, perspective and dedication would be a significant loss to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the community. A number of important issues on major developments within the city will need to be addressed over the next few years. An experienced and knowledgeable Zoning Board of Appeals will be critical to ensuring Livonia maintains its aesthetics and sense of community as well as a reputation as a standard bearer for southeast Michigan. To be clear, this letter is not intended to be a denigration of the appointee's qualifications or dedications to the community. I have no opinion on the appointee as concerningly no information regarding this appointee's qualification or background was shared directly with me as chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, nor were my thoughts and opinions sought out by the appointer prior to placing this appointment on the agenda. Nevertheless, I'm very confident this appointee does not have the depth of knowledge and experience with zoning issues that will be lost should Chris Bolivan not be reappointed. I ask council to carefully reflect on its responsibility to the citizens of Livonia in appointing and approving members of important boards and commissions, especially when a well-qualified, experienced and existing member is willing to continue to sacrifice valuable personal time-
Next time, Tim. Sorry.
-for the benefit of the city. Thank you.
And just for the record, we did, I think, receive that as new data. Any other audience communications?
Oh, you still got people. Sorry.
This is my time. There should be no uh-oh.
Listen, listen. Just know, hey, guys, guys, let's, the floor is yours. Name and address. You have two minutes.
All right. I'm going to agree with Tim on this. This is something that I don't like an OHM individual on this board, period. I think it's a, it's a mistake. I think they've got their fingers in the pie in a lot of other areas. And so I'm just not in favor of this. I think there's other people that wouldn't have this baggage that they'd be bringing forth to the ZBA. And people who know me know I don't agree with Gregory Coppola on everything, but on this one, I actually do. And I think this would be a, this wouldn't be in the best interest of any petitioner that went there seeking a variance on anything. And so that's my thought on that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Martin, are you done?
I'm done. Now-
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. The floor is yours.
Mine? Or it is?
Who was first? Councilwoman Troy.
Was I first? Oh, okay. Hey, zoning board. How many of you know about the zoning board? Okay. What are their terms, then? Do we realize what terms are? I have a term. I'm done, December 31st at midnight. Okay? So what I'm saying is-
Wait, no, 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 no.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to debate anything.
No, just-
I'm just throwing it out because we just, sorry if you interpreted that way. I wasn't. What I'm saying is, we do have terms in this city. I will be leaving December 31st at midnight. Zoning board members have terms. My zoning board member, I don't even know when he's up. I know he has 100% attendance record. And I'm not so sure others on the zoning board do, Mr. Quist and others. And I don't want to bring up sore subjects, but we're here as a council to appoint people. And we are trying to appoint the most qualified people we know. And I respect every one of my colleagues. I've been on this board and I've been on this board time and time again when other members have appointed members to the zoning board. Some of them were more political than not, so that they could have some background being on a zoning board that was part of the city of Livonia. And so my thought on this, everyone, is it is up to each of us to pick the person we want to pick. And there should be no debate on that unless they're an ax murderer or that lets have a criminal record for somehow. But no, honesty, they do have terms. We know when their terms are up. That's nothing against the personnel that we now are presently talking about because he is very qualified. He is extremely qualified. He's an attorney, for God's sakes. Only thing that makes him better, I guess, is a doctor. But I'm, all I'm saying and all kiddingness is, she has the right, meaning, what is your name? Councilwoman Buzinski, to go ahead and appoint, I'm sorry, it's late, who she would like to appoint. OHM, okay, big deal. You could say that about me. I operate on Plymouth Road. So every time there's an issue coming up on Plymouth Road, should I step down from here real quick? We all have opinions. And, you know, it behooves us to get the most qualified people that we can. And I'm not saying this individual isn't qualified, Mr. Bolivan, but he was appointed by another council member a long time ago. And so in my view, it's up to us who we want to appoint. When she starts taking that away from different council members, it's, it really waters down this council. So I'm really sorry to go on about this, but I kind of felt strongly about it when I first kind of heard about it and I thought, this is senseless. I've been on this council for a lot of years and we've never had an issue like this that I recall. And I, and my memory could be serving me wrong, everyone, but honestly, I don't remember it. So please, you know, God bless the guy that's leaving or the woman that may come in or whatever's going to happen here. But I, I respect my colleagues and I respect their decisions. I don't always agree with all of them, but thank you very much. I didn't mean to go off on a soapbox again.
No, no, no.
I don't know what's going on with me tonight.
No, you're good. I appreciate it.
Or lack of.
I got Councilman Donavich, vice president, then Councilman Morgan. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to my colleague, Councilwoman Buzinski, for your nomination this evening. I do appreciate it. For the people that may not be familiar with the appointment structure, I know the councilwoman kind of explained that a little bit, but council, each gets an appointment on their tenure of the council and that rotates through various council members. And like myself, the majority of the time, council members inherit existing commissioners, just by the fact that we are elected and we come and go every two to four years. Maybe that's extended six years, up to eight years. It's normal for us to inherit a commissioner that we never knew, that we, in fact, did not appoint. I'm no exception to that. I know the council president, earlier we talked about Mr. Klitz, Commissioner Klitz, he was appointed and he was inherited. So that's normal. I inherited Mr. Coppola. Never met the gentleman before, spoke to his colleagues. All of his colleagues had a lot of great things to say about him and his experience in the ZBA. So it was normal for me to reappoint Mr. Coppola. This evening, we are experiencing something that's unprecedented. We are, in fact, firing a, a very experienced ZBA commissioner, Commissioner Bolivan, by the appointment of someone else. And that other person sounds great and has some great-
Get a point of order really quick.
Yes, sir.
Is, there's no, no one's getting fired, Mr. Fisher?
The term is expiring and-
I just want to clarify-
Would be vacant otherwise.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bolivan is being expired. And he is the most experienced person on the ZBA. He has served for more than six years. He is a attorney who deals with all things real estate. He deals in land use matters, works in the CPA industry, is a local small business owner, is revered by his commissioners who have served with him for six years. So to me, I am not going to support the nomination, albeit I respect my colleagues' decision to make that appointment that is having to be voted on by the council. I have a lot of great things to say about Mr. Bolivan and his experience. He, in my estimation, is the most qualified person for the job, serving six years on the ZBA, having great work ethic and dedication to that role. And me, in good conscience, on a principle, cannot expire him. And I don't, I don't think that the city should do that to our volunteers. It's hard to get people to volunteer on boards. It's hard to get people to get involved in the community. And as my principle, it sends a very difficult message to those volunteers that soon as your time is up, if you still want to continue to serve, that may not be possible. And it's normal if a member no longer wants to serve. If they are resigning, if they don't want to be involved in the community, then that seat is vacant. And then it's very normal, it's par for the course for that position to be filled by a new person. But it is, in fact, unprecedented to, to no longer extend the appointment of somebody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President, Councilman Morgan, Councilwoman Buzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I completely respect my colleagues' right to nominate whoever she wants to as a candidate for this. But it's a nomination. It's not, she's not making the appointment by herself. And this is no different than if the president, you know, is selecting his cabinet. He makes a nomination and then it goes before the Senate for a hearing. This is kind of a, I mean, not on that grand scale, of course, but it's a very similar situation. She's brought before us a nominee and now we have to decide on, on accepting the nominee. And honestly, I believe that Ms. Hakela has a very strong resume. I think she's very qualified. And if this was an open seat, this would be a slam dunk for me, to be honest. But having served on the ZBA with Mr. Bolivan, who was an exemplary board member and continues to be, it just concerns me that we're going to remove him or expire him. That sounds wrong, but if this passes. And it feels like we're removing him without cause. And that just, I have some, it gives me pause, to be honest. It's been a longstanding practice to reappoint individuals who have performed exceptionally well on a commission, as demonstrated by our previous agenda item. And with everything going on, experience is critical and we have a highly qualified member who wants to stay, who's available for reappointment. And I just, I'm going to have to consider this very carefully. And I know the motion was to put it on consent. I would like it to be on the regular effect hood, please.
So we have it on the regular.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, no problem. Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, I think my colleagues have pretty much said everything. I mean, I've known Chris Bolivan. He's done a great job. I served on the ZBA for a bit myself. And it is very difficult to try and remove someone or the idea of removing someone who wants to serve their city. And I think this is, this is a very tough decision, especially when this is just a nomination and considering he's served the city so well. And I would really like to see that continue. So I think that's about all I got to say right now.
Thank you. Well, we do have an approving on regular. Carrie, do you mind if I just say something really quick before, and I'll hand it for you for closing? We've been approving on regular. I just want to touch base because there's been, at least me personally, there has been issues with the ZBA appointments, to the point that we had to create an ordinance that basically gave order of nomination. And listen, Mr. Bolivan, I've known him a very long time through the hockey world. He's a great, he's a great asset. My only issue is, is, you know, this is somewhat democracy and, you know, as much as I'd like to stay council president, I can't after my term. It's not in the charter. And I know this isn't a charter, but I look at this and I go, this is how we evolve as a city with new leadership. And that clearly is written, that that is the, you know, the choice of the council member that's doing it. Now, obviously, if someone came in and, you know, the resume wasn't matching, that'd be one thing. But it's kind of like zoning. And let me reference, you know, it's like changing the zoning. So when everybody was up in arms about Planned Moran, or not Planned Moran, sorry, that slipped out, Planned Parenthood, the zoning, you can't change it. You can't change it. So the city could be sued, just like the consent judgment. Listen, that's how it goes. So I'm looking at things going, this is the democratic process. And then all the time that I've seen in my five years on council, it seems like the ZBA appointments, and this is just my reference, you know, if you go back, I can name names. They were put on, they were involved in a council election, they were elected. And that's okay. Listen, that's the point of the person.
Politics.
And so, you know, unless, you know, Lindsay had a crazy past, but she doesn't. She does great things at her job. And, you know, Mr. Martin, and listen, I'm not getting into debate on this and I appreciate where you're coming from on that. But just as anybody, you know, I work for the city of Northville Township, or Township of Northville, right? There's different things and we all sign the ethics agreement. And that is our word and there's an Ethics Commission. So those are protected. And just going down that path saying, hey, no one at OHM can be on a board or a commission, well, I think we're going to lose a lot of people on every other commission. So this one's tough, like I said, you know, any way you look at it. But it just goes for democracy. And that's Carrie's pick. And unless there's something that is professionally, you know, an issue, I think that instead of saying, you know, we're going to expire Mr. Bolivan, I think you should be looking at it more on defeating the experience and education and experience that Lindsay has and not bringing in the appointment status just because we'd like to. Now, if you guys can find something to debate that, I'd be more than happy to listen and open my ears to it. But just by saying, hey, someone's there, this is the process. So that's just my two thoughts on it. I appreciate everybody that's coming out. And yeah. Anything else from council?
Mr. President, yes.
Yes. Here, Councilwoman Buzinski.
So, you know, my feelings on this is, you know, a lot of people have mentioned Chris Bolivan. I don't know him. You know, I appreciate that other people do and think highly of him and I appreciate his service to the city. Him and Lindsay have served the city in official capacity for the same length of time. You know, this is a nominee that I am putting forward to the city council. It is not a reappointment of somebody, you know. I am comfortable making a supportive vote for an individual I don't know for a position based on the recommendation of a colleague or the administration. But this is a situation where I am being asked and I'm required to put forward a name and select a nominee. I think it's preposterous that I would nominate somebody I don't know. I am selecting somebody who is experienced, who I trust, who I know will serve the city well and has the education, the background and experience to do this job well. And that's never the conversation that I have or I'm hearing. Again, it's not about Lindsay, who's the actual nominee. It's about Chris Bolivan, who I do not know. And, you know, he's not the longest-serving member of the ZBA, to the point of this is a nomination for, it's up for renewal, you know. So I get to put up a name. It is not a firing. It is not personal. I don't know who he is. So I want to put up the name of somebody that I, I don't know. And I think that, you know, again, Lindsay brings experience. We don't have a civil engineer on the ZBA. I think that that is, you know, we have many attorneys on the ZBA. I think that that matters. And so I hope that Lindsay will be considered for her experience and what she can bring to this position, opposed to the disappointment that people might feel that Chris is not on the ZBA anymore because he's not, he's not the nominee that we're here to consider tonight. And I feel like in the conversation of, well, if somebody wants to serve, that they should be allowed to-
should be allowed to continue, that that, that, that's a different thing. It's kind of like with the consent agenda at our last meeting, where it was like, do I, do I have a choice, or do I not have a choice? And I think, you know, if we're creating this illusion of, you know, that ZBA members get to determine whether or not they continue, then why is it a requirement for me to make an, you know, offer a name of a nominee? So Lindsay is my nominee. I feel confident that she will serve Livonia well. I know she is experienced. Her resume is available online. Her direct report, um, Jessica Katers offered that statement of support. She is a partner with OHM, um, and I hope my colleagues will keep all of that in mind when this comes before us again at our next meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Um, I got Councilman Donavich, then, sure, you got it.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the city attorney through the chair, Mr. Fisher, can you shed some light on whether this be council rules, or the ordinance, or by charter for the council appointment of the ZBA?
Sure. So, um, the, the chapter of the Code of Ordinances on city council and city council authority, uh, establishes that council has to appoint members of the zoning board. In February of last year, a resolution was passed by council establishing the rules under which, uh, appointees would be, uh, nominated and then voted on by council. So it's a combination of ordinance and resolution, uh, that, the resolution being the council rules that are currently in effect.
But more specifically to the rules portion of it, though?
Sure.
Those council rules can change, as opposed to ordinance where it's more of a formal, formality, more of a vote?
The council rules can change, but given that they, they've been promulgated by a resolution, it would require a second resolution to change the current rules.
Okay. Appreciate you explaining that, uh, that portion of it. Um, again, I, I know there's been some conversation, and, and my, my comments remain the same. Uh, I think it was very telling. Thank you to the members of the ZBA, uh, for supporting and shedding light on what you guys do every day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toy?
Thank you. Uh, like my colleague, I was going to come over to you, Mr. Fisher. Um, basically, um, the zoning board serves for three-year terms, correct?
Correct.
And on that resolution, could you help me understand the resolution and perhaps why we put the resolution forward? Because I think there was some disagreement, if I recall, on that resolution back a number of years ago, when it came to an appointment? I mean, you know, it's helpful to have history.
Sure. And, and I can't give sort of all the legislative history on the resolution. The resolution itself, as it currently stands, um, stipulates that when there is a vacancy on the board, the member with the most tenure on council, who has not made an appointment, uh, gets to make the next appointment, uh, it gets to make the next nomination for that appointment, which will then be voted on by the council as a whole. Um, I, I do think that there have been, at times, some sort of consternation and confusion about those rules, but my understanding is that that rule encapsulates the traditions that council had typically, uh, observed before, a- and was just meant to formalize, uh, and make sure that those traditions were observed going forward.
So if I understand this correctly, if there were four votes, there's seven of us, and if there were four votes or five votes, or however many, and it failed to give her her appointment, then that seat would become, she'd have to either pick someone new, or would it go to the, another council person? Because my understanding is it would hold with her, that vacancy, is that correct?
The, the rule doesn't really contemplate that level of granularity, to be honest, but, um, I, I think the most straightforward and simple reading of the rule would be that the seat would remain vacant until that same council person, in this instance, uh, Council Member Wodzinski, offered another appointment, another nomination.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions from council, concerns? We do have an approving on the regular. Anything from the audience? Oh, we already went to the audience. We, I already went to the audience on it, I'm sorry. Yeah, on that item. If you would, yeah, yes, I'm sorry. We did. It's been a long night. With that, I am going, that, that does conclude the study agenda. I'm going to, uh, jump back to the audience. If there's any audience communication, that item's not on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Cheers.